All the order, the July the fifteenth, twenty twenty four voting session. The invocation will be provided by Dr. Larry Cockerman, Cockrum, Pastor Emetris of Living Word Church. The pledge of allegiance will be given by Commissioner Mike Hughes. Please stand.
Oh, Lord God Almighty, we recognize you as the one who sits above the circle of the earth, ruling in the affairs of men. We call upon you here in this meeting of Bradley County Commissioners. We ask your blessing, including the wisdom of God for every decision of this body of governance. We also join with our Tennessee House of Representatives, Senate and Governor, according to House Joint Resolution eight oh three, in recognizing this period of July first through the thirty first as a time of prayer and fasting in Tennessee. We recognize that God, as Creator and King of all glory, has both the authority to judge and to bless nations, states and communities. We join together with these and other public servants in Tennessee to seek God's mercy upon our land. And we beseech you, oh Lord, please do not withdraw your gracious hand of blessing from us. In this official time of repentance, we recognize our sins and shortcomings before God and humbly ask your forgiveness. We ask the Lord Jesus to heal our land and remove the violence, human trafficking, addiction and corruption. We ask that the Holy Spirit fill our halls of government, our classrooms, our places of business, our churches and our homes with peace. We join together in seeking God's blessing and humbling ourselves to receive your grace and mercy, transforming ourselves, our communities, our state and our nation, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Prior to the roll call, I'd like to welcome a new intern at the Cleveland Daily Banner, Kenny Knott, right? Okay, great. Welcome. We were glad to have you. And also the Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, Mike Griffith, along with Doug Berry, Industrial Development Board. And we've got Ms. Gleason and her husband with us for a change here. Haven't seen you in a while. Welcome back. Hannah Goodson from the Agricultural Extension Service, welcome. And now we'll go to the roll call, please.
Mason, Ledford.
Yeah, here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
It's thirteen present and one absent.
Thank you. Now have the approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes. My Commissioner Hughes, second by Commissioner Goins, discussion. None. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now go to the county mayor for the report from the county mayor, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Even though we have a lot of things on the agenda today, I do have an additional resolution. And Brittany Hopkins, the Director of Bradley County Health Department, is also here in case you have questions. But the resolution in front of you is to complete the renovations of Bradley County Health Department that was begun a year or two ago. This is mostly all state-funded money. It's all in the budget. It is using our ARP-funded amount also. So if you would approve this today, even though it's not on the agenda, it'll take ten votes, but it will allow them to begin the work August first, so.
Commissioner Winters on the second, Commissioner Slater. Discussion, please. No discussion called. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, does this complete the funding for this project? That's a, if I'm going by memory, that's a little bit more than we budgeted.
We've budgeted a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar match. That's our part in it.
So this, this completes this project, right?
It should. They actually bid other things in addition that came in over the amount that the state had. But this will complete the renovations of the building, the roof and so forth. They were also going to be doing a drive-through canopy thing, but that had to be pulled out. Is that right? But anyway, we'll complete the renovation. It's all state money except for our ARP match.
So that, I don't even know that canopy, if we wanted to do that, that would be one hundred percent on us then?
Yeah, if we did it at this time.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Consent agenda, pages three and four. Entertain a motion for Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Goins. No, no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Prior to going to the reports from committees and our districts, I'd like to welcome Dr. Linda Cash here from the Director of Schools. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
And his service to the fourth best replaces form and recommendation in form of motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gilbert on the second. Open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion to that, please, that offer a substitute motion, name the course after Commissioner Howard Thompson, of course, and to elect a sign for course use in Commission line five ninety-nine at no more than a cost of two hundred dollars.
Do I have a second on the substitute? Do I have a second? Commissioner Hughes on the second. We'll call the roll on the substitute.
What is going on?
We'll call the roll on the substitute motion, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
I don't know what's going on. You're paying for it. No.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
This is to replace the original motion, correct?
Yes.
No.
Slater. Does anyone wish to change their vote? It's eleven in favor, two opposed and one absent.
Yes.
A lot of people understood that. We, we've already voted. Something happened there that somebody don't remember.
The, the Frisbee Golf Course on Menace Road, their motion was made and it was approved, voted on and approved to name it after Howard Thompson. And that's what we're voting on. And then the substitute motion was that we appropriate two hundred dollars maximum to put a sign there, recognizing Howard Thompson Golf Course, Frisbee Golf Course. That's what the vote was for. I don't recall the basketball player paying her own street sign, but that's neither here nor there.
But the county did.
No, county didn't pay for it. All right, we've taken the vote, right? And is anyone here to change their vote? All right. Let's see, where, where were we, we were, any reports? Commissioner Rogers, we were still with you, I believe.
Nothing.
We're through? Okay. Commissioner Ledford.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just prayers for our President Trump. Everybody knows what happened to him, so let's continue to remember him in the prayer. It's election time for the city. I go to the city council meetings quite often. And we, I know there's three districts up here that are going to be voting in the city. Those positions are very important. Because I work together with those guys. I talk to those guys quite often, because what affects them affects us. And we need to, we need to support them and support those guys that are running for these offices. And I think the same way Charleston City has a, an election going on as well. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, sixth district is doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Growth Plan Study Committee met last Wednesday for their kickoff meeting. Craig Mullenax was elected as Chair, to serve as Chair or Chair of that committee. And I was elected to serve as Vice Chair of that committee. Our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth at four PM in this commission conference room, so that we will be able to livestream the meeting. Also, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mason asked me to remind everyone that the road committee will meet on July thirty-first at nine AM in the commission conference room. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins, please.
Fifth District soon will, except for Inman Street. And that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, the Building and Land Committee met and last week and voted unanimously to recommend a resolution authorizing Bradley County Mayor to execute a development and acquisition agreement with the city of Cleveland to exchange property located at two sixty Inman Street for the city agreeing to construct a fire facility on property owned by the county located at three sixty-five Menace Road. This resolution is item D on the agenda, so we'll, when we get to.
Hold it just a second. What? We've got that one down below.
Yeah, I said, that's what I said, the item is item D on the agenda, so.
Oh, okay.
That'll be brought up on item D.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the committee revisited Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-five declaring approximately five point six five acres of Bradley County property located on New Street, a portion of which is known as the Old Waterville Elementary School property on Dalton Park. Map and parcel number oh seven four H C zero zero three zero zero. As surplus property and authorizing the mayor offer for sale a portion of this property by public bid. The committee discussed potential use of the property and agreed it would best serve the county to be used as a fire training area. So we voted unanimously to reject all bids for the property and to recline Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-five and place this in recommendation, recommendation in the form of a motion.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
I, along with the mayor and Mr. Winters, went to a solemn assembly here in front of the courthouse. You're talking about one of the most powerful things I've seen done in front of this courthouse. It was amazing. And they, they had given me just a few lines to read, and I thought, boy, I sure am glad that's all they gave me. But then I got to looking under my part, and it talked about Psalms one twenty-seven and one. And I just want to read that. Unless the Lord builds the house, its builder's labor is in vain. Unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman stands guard in vain. In vain, you rise early and stay up late, tolling for food to eat. For he grants you sleep, he grants sleep to those he loves. And I thought, man, that, it was just powerful. It was amazing. We need this in our country and in our community. So thank you, brother, for organizing this and getting it together. And it was just great. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, no. One more thing. If the commission would allow it, I would like to make Howard Thompson sign for him. If y'all would allow that, please.
I want to make the sign for him.
Have a sign made for his disc golf.
Do we need to, at last?
Do I need to make a motion on that?
Well, first, we need to revoke the, do we need to vote to remove the approved one?
I, I think you're okay. The, in my opinion, at least, the motion was to expend up to that amount. So if, if he chooses to do that and we spend nothing, we wouldn't necessarily have to undo anything.
Okay.
I'll make it very tasteful and nice.
Do we have a second on that, please?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Winters. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Excuse me.
Hold. Go ahead.
So it's my understanding that there's already signage being made for the holes and for the course itself. Can we make sure that the sign you're going to make matches what the other signage is?
Yes, ma'am.
So it, it doesn't look like it was something homemade or something not, I'm not saying you'd make a homemade sign, but just so there's some continuity in what it looks like?
Yes, ma'am. I, I agree. I'll bring you a copy.
I don't have to have a copy. I just want it to look nice.
Anyone else?
We have to, that's something we have to vote on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can. County attorney, is that appropriate?
I don't think there's anything you would have to do. Certainly, if somebody felt compelled to give more direction, they could. But as we sit, you all have approved an expenditure of up to two hundred dollars for the sign. If that signage is not needed as far as payment, then we just wouldn't spend that money. So I don't think you'd have to do anything else.
I, not that I don't trust Commissioner Gilbert, but I, as chairman, I would like to have a vote and, and have the motion made, which he's made, and the second, and then if there's no discussion, we'll vote on it, and then we have a commitment. Does that sound, does that approach sound all right? And it's not any offense to you.
Yes, sir.
Call the roll, please.
We need a second.
Hey, yeah. Oh, he missed our winters. Never mind, we got a second. Yeah, Commissioner Winters. Yeah, correct.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a second.
Yeah, we've got a second. Commissioner Winters had the second. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
I don't, I, yes, I don't. I, can some, can you read the motion, please? I don't, I don't even know what the motion is.
I'd like to make a motion to pay for the sign and have it done for the Frisbee Golf Course in honor of Howard Thompson. And I will bring a.
The motion is going to pay for it himself?
Yeah, I'm going to pay for it and have it done.
Wonderful. No dollars to the tax.
There you are.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes. Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Thank you. Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater. Anyone wish to change their vote? It's twelve in favor and unopposed, one pass and one absent.
Is that it, sir?
It's all for me.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm glad to see Larry and Levana Cockrum here today. They are the motors of prayer in this community. They've spent years of building opportunities for this community to come together and thank the Lord for things and also do this resolution. They were behind this solemn prayer assembly, and it's already been spoken to of how great it was. But the mayor and I and Scotty Gilbert and others of the community were able to join reading exactly what our legislature has put together. And it was a great time. It was about two hundred and fifty plus people, I think. A great opportunity for us to reflect on the importance of faith in this community and also legislation that supports that. So it was an honor being there. I'd like to thank them. Levana and I went to Lee University together. We were freshmen together. We have stories to tell about those great days. But it's an honor for, I'm, I'm glad they're here today, that we can really see the people that were behind this. It was the first call that I got, and I think that many in this community got, that let's, let's do this. So thank you for doing that. That's all I have.
Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing other than a recognition, Ms. Knott, who is a graduate of Bradley County Schools, twenty twenty-three, correct? Walker Valley High School at Washington and Lee. Is that correct? Washington Lee in Virginia. And we're glad that you've come home, even though you're working with Grant. We apologize for that. You, you represent us well. Thank you for coming back and thank you for doing a great job. Welcome home.
I think not only was she a graduate of Walker Valley, you were the, what was your title? valedictorian too. So the banner is blessed. Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. I meant to say this last week, but remember the HCI, we changed the calendar. The HCI Committee will meet in January. I talked with the trustee. The other day, he's reinvesting to keep the extra six months we have. It should be a good amount to be able to grant out in January. But the water grant, the thirty-three, thirty-four thousand that we budget for water, now that the art money is, projects are done, we're back to the HCI doing water projects. So if your district, if any of your constituents have water needs, contact Lori. That pro, that program still goes on a July to June cycle, so it's, it's open right now. So I just want to make you aware of that. Investment dollars, nobody's applied it right now. Next, Crystal. The other day I asked about the procedures or, or on the growth committee, exactly what it takes to pass this. And we chatted, you said that all three legislative bodies have to approve, so just one, either Charleston, Cleveland or us, we don't approve it, then it doesn't, it doesn't go pa, it doesn't pass, or it goes on to another layer of scrutiny or something like that.
Yes, correct. Yeah, essentially you go back to the drawing board and.
So it's not a situation where if it doesn't pass, that ends it. It, it has to.
Yeah, there's, there's a process. Ultimately, though, if it can't be approved, then it's not approved. So there, there is a process that, that we can, and ultimately, the state does get involved, but I'm assuming they would look at our current plan that we have and probably revert back to what has been approved. But that, there is a process.
There is a process and a, but to reiterate, all three bodies have to approve, according to their numbers in their legislative body. That's for eight, city council for, two for Charleston, I believe.
That is correct, yes.
Right. So what if this committee comes back and says that the current growth plan, as it is right now, they reviewed it and it's good? In other words, no changes necessary. That's a legitimate recommendation back to the three legislative bodies, correct?
Yes.
I just want to make that clear. Other than that, oh, it's good. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, second district's doing well.
Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one thing to report. There was a misunderstanding by a few of my constituents in the reading of the newspaper. To make a, a public notice, I have no plans to resign from the Bradley County Commission at any time. So I've already spoke with Grant, and I think he's going to try to correct it, make it a little more clear in the next newspaper article. But other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay, great. Commissioner Beatty.
Everything's doing well in the first district.
We, to my knowledge, have no unfinished business. We'll move along to the approval of the agenda. I would, Commissioner Winters on the motion, second on Goins. Open for discussion, please. There being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Marlon Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution authorizing the Bradley County trustee to continue to collect municipal property taxes on behalf of Charleston City and authorizing the mayor and the trustee to negotiate and execute an inter-local agreement with Charleston, Tennessee for the provision of said services. You can see that on page five and six. I put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second on Commissioner Slater. Open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item B, Commissioner Cindy Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute on behalf of Bradley County the participation for, form for the Kroger opioid settlement and the form for proposed amendments to the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement. And this agreement can be found on page seven and eight in your packet. And I place this in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Rogers on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item C, Commissioner Josh Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution declaring approximately point four six acres on the left side of the road and point four six acres on the right side of the road, Bradley County property located on Stewart Road. A portion of the map and parcel number zero four two zero zero six point zero zero, surplus property and authorized the county sale of portion of property by public bid. Places.
Do I have a second, Commissioner? Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item D, Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I put this in form of motion. It's a resolution authorize the Bradley County Mayor to execute a development and acquisition agreement with the city of Cleveland to exchange property located at two six hundred Inman Street for the city agreeing to construct a fire facility on property owned by the, by the county located at three sixty-five Menace Road. It's going to be seen on pages ten, or page ten.
The address should be not two six hundred, two sixty. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Malin Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution authorizing the Bradley County trustee to continue to collect municipal property taxes on behalf of Charleston Tennessee and authorizing the mayor and the trustee to negotiate and execute an inter-local agreement with Charleston Tennessee for the provision of said services. You can see that on page five and six. I put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second on Commissioner Slater. Open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item B, Commissioner Cindy Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute on behalf of Bradley County the participation for, form for the Kroger opioid settlement and the form for proposed amendments to the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement. And this agreement can be found on page seven and eight in your packet. And I place this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Second.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Rogers on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item D, Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I put this in form of motion. It's a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute a development and acquisition agreement with the city of Cleveland to exchange property located at twenty-six-hundred Eminence Street for the city of Greington to construct a fire facility on property owned by the Br, or by the county located at three-sixty-five Minutes Road. It's going to be seen on pages ten, or page ten.
The address should be not twenty-six-hundred-two-sixty, is that correct?
It's two-sixty, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Thompson on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item B, Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute on behalf of Bradley County the participation for, form for the Kroger opioid settlement and the form for proposed amendments to the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement. And this agreement can be found on page seven and eight in your packet. And I place this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Second.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Rogers on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item B, Commissioner Cindy Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute on behalf of Bradley County the participation for, form for the Kroger opioid settlement and the form for proposed amendments to the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement. And this agreement can be found on page seven and eight in your packet. And I place this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Second.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Rogers on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item C, Commissioner Josh Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution declaring approximately point four-six acres on the left side of the road and point four-six acres on the right side of the road. Bradley County property located on Stewart Road. Portion of the map and parcel number zero-four-two-zero-zero-six-point-zero-zero, third plus property on the horizon of the county. Sale of portion of property by public bid. Places.
Do I have a second? Commissioner, Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item D, Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I put this in form of motion. It's a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute a development and acquisition agreement with the city of Cleveland to exchange property located at twenty-six-hundred Eminence Street for the city of Greington to construct a fire facility on property owned by the Br, or by the county located at three-sixty-five Minutes Road. It's going to be seen on pages ten, or page ten.
The address should be not twenty-six-hundred-two-sixty, is that correct?
It's two-sixty, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Thompson on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item F, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution increasing the compensation of Bradley County Mayor Board members to thirty-four dollars and eighty-three cents per monthly meeting. You see this on page thirteen. I put this in form of motion. Thank you.
Second. Do I have a, we have a second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item G, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution increasing the fee. Constable is entitled to demand to execute a writ of possession in Bradley County to eighty-five dollars pursuant to authority set forth in Tennessee Code annotated eight dash twenty-one dash nine-zero-one subsection D. This is on page fourteen. Mr. Chairman, I put this in form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
I'm going to pass.
Thompson.
No.
Slater.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's eleven in favor, one opposed, one pass and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item E, Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution authorizing the Bradley County, Bradley County Attorney to prepare and follow any and all necessary legal actions in court of Bradley County to institute injunction, mandamus, abatement, or any other appropriate action to prevent, enjoin, and abate the unlawful use of property located at four-forty Old Powerline Road Northeast, Cleveland, Tennessee, three-seven-three-one-one. This will be seen on pages eleven and twelve. I put that in form of motion.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Goins on the second. Now, if we all remember, this is the resolution that we sent back down, as I understand it, to the planning commission because someone had reapplied or something, and it's been, they took no action. So we're reconsidering the resolution. Is there any discussion, please? Old Powerline Road, it's that scrapyard. Well, there was no changes. There were no changes to the application, so they, they passed, sent it back up here to us. No further, go ahead, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's kind of interesting to hear in the sense that the whole reason why we sent it back to the planning commission is because there was a new application. We can hopefully, you know, you know, imply that there was a change in the application. Why accept the, the exact same application? I looked to the county attorney. I know it's, it's not her duty, but there's got to be, there's got to be some kind of control put in place that if someone submits an application and it gets turned down, and then they submit another application and it's exactly the same, that it basically gets a big old rejection stamp on it. Because it confuses, well, not confuse it, but it puts us in a predicament that we shouldn't have been in, in the sense that a second application, we were told, was submitted. We implied that there was a change, you know? So we've got, do we need to make a policy that the, the, if another application, if an application comes in, it has to have material changes?
Um, well, ultimately, that decision is up for the planning commission to make if there's a question. Um, I, I think our planner had never dealt with this issue before, and he had already accepted the application. Um, and so he sent it to the planning commission. But ultimately, it's their decision about whether or not to rehear. And they had a hearing on whether or not there was a change or material change and determined that there was not.
But doesn't that create a bit of a loophole, the sense that if I keep applying, knowing that you're going to turn me down, but I, all I got to do is apply in, every month the planning commission meets and they turn it down, all I'm doing is buying time. I mean, we've got to have some kind of control in place that this doesn't happen again, where a second application is submitted and there is no change.
Well, ultimately, the, the planner has the authority and can discourage them from applying by saying, I don't see a material change here. I don't think the planning commission will either. But if they do choose to still fill out the application and still apply, it's ultimately up to the planning commission to make that decision.
We need a policy in place one of these days, I think.
the property owner. I don't know exactly if it was, who it was, but the, the substance of the application, Planning Commission determined, had not changed.
Thank you. Commissioner Winters, please.
I think, I think even with a new application, they're doing the same thing. I mean, that's why I think they turned it down. It's just the same stuff. So, if you just keep doing this, as was said, but this, this action that we're looking at, this, and they, and mandamus abatement, means they can't continue for it. But if this is approved, move forward, then they can play that game, correct?
Uh, no, if, if this is approved and moves forward, I will begin the process of going to court and legal action to get the courts involved to, an injunction is where they are told by the courts that you cannot continue. But there's a process, and we have to prove that in court. We have to prove that we are correct, that there is a zoning violation, and then we have to convince the court to issue that injunction. So, it just allows us to begin the process.
Mr. Blake, please.
Okay, so what happens if tomorrow they reapply, and there's something material change after this should pass? I mean, I guess the, just what I'm, yes, how do you stop the, not to be disrespectful, the game plan, I guess? I mean, they, they could apply tomorrow, right?
They, they could, but I would assume this exact same thing would happen as happened before, which is either the planner would say there's no material change, and they would decide not to, or they would go ahead and fill it out, and then Planning Commission would do the same thing. If there was a material change, then certainly, this process could be stopped, because these two pros, these two processes are not going on the same track. I mean, the fact that someone applies for a rezoning request, until the property's rezoned, they're operating outside of the zoning, and they are in violation. So, unless they get the property rezoned, I will move forward with this.
That's an important point, that there's nothing, if, should this pass, there's nothing stopping you from doing with this resolution, if, if they apply or anything.
That's correct. I will move forward unless the property's rezoned.
Anyone else, please? No further discussion, call the roll, please.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Uh, yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's twelve in favor, one opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item F, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution increasing the compensation of Bradley County Ver Board members to thirty-four dollars and eighty-three cents per monthly meeting. You see this on page thirteen. I put this in form of motion. Thank you.
Second.
Do I have a, we have a second, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item G, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution increasing the fee. A constable is entitled to demand to execute a writ of possession in Bradley County to eighty-five dollars pursuant to authority set forth in Tennessee Code annotated eight dash twenty-one dash nine-zero-one, subsection D. This is on page fourteen. Mr. Chairman, I put this in form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Goins on the second, open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to communication from the audience. I will recognize and allow five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Yes, please.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the welcome. I had a leg injury, a knee injury, family, and auto problems, so that kind of kept me from getting out. On July sixth, twenty-twenty-four, I sent an email to my commissioners, as well as to the other twelve commissioners on this board, and to the mayor. The email was a video clip regarding the five elements of the First Amendment and the Fifth and the Sixth Amendment. The video was a speech given by a former sheriff, Jack McGlynn, in nineteen ninety-four. Neither one of my commissioners bothered to acknowledge receipt of the email from me. In all fairness, there has been a history of not returning constituents' calls or responding to emails. Although I really wouldn't expect an acknowledgement from the other commissioners, I did receive an acknowledgement from one of them, which indicates a sense of professionalism and courtesy on their part. As for my commissioners, either they are unprofessional and discourteous, or lack of feeling of obligation to their constituents, or fail to fulfill their obligation under the Tennessee Code annotated section thirty-nine dash sixteen dash four-oh-two, Part Four, official misconduct under paragraph A, a public servant commits an offense who with intent to obtain a benefit or to harm another intentionally or knowingly. Number three of this section refrains from performing a duty that is imposed by law or that is clearly inherent in the nature of the public servant's office or employment. Carries a potential ramification as follows. If the defendant's conduct violates this section and other criminal statutes, nothing in this subsection's E shall be construed or prohibiting prosecution and conviction for theft or any other such applicable offense in addition to or in lieu of prosecution and conviction for a violation of this section. That is the seriousness of an attitude of any public servant who has taken an oath to our state. To say that, I wouldn't worry about the social media, I do what I want to, that sort of sums up the attitude of some commission, commissioners, who feel they have no obligation to the public for their actions or words, or that they can all vote unanimously concerning the date of a meeting to pass the Bradley County Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Budget back in February twenty twenty-four, and five of those who voted to do so don't